Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. All right. Six thirty-one here. All right. Good evening, the time is six thirty-one and we'll call this special meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. The first item on tonight's agenda, and keep in mind this is a special meeting with only two items tonight. The first item is the acceptance of an easement from Tilcon for riverfront access. And I just want to say that this easement that is before the Board of Selectmen tonight has been a very long time coming. There was a lot of work that went in to reaching out to Tilcon through the previous Board of Selectmen and the previous first select woman. And also, we've continued that effort. And so, just last week, we received some very good news with approval of this easement agreement from Tilcon. And so, we had our town attorney review the easement agreement with the changes. And so, I see you have those before you. And so, I think that this is a very good agreement for the town. Certainly, I really want to thank Tilcon for being so generous with this easement agreement. Because what this will eventually allow the town of Portland is to access our town of Portland property that we already have that's along the riverfront. And so, with this easement, we will be able to have a road that connects to the town property and also, the ability for parking of up to twenty cars. And so, we will be able to use this for the potential to have a boat launch. So, we might, not a motorized boat launch, but canoes and kayaks and whatnot. And so, I know that this has been a goal of the Board of Selectmen for many years to access the riverfront and all of our riverfront in town. We have so much of it along the Connecticut River and we don't have a public access to the river. So, I've been working with two of our former Board of Selectmen members, Rick Scharr and Lou Pear, who are here tonight. And we have a meeting on this on Thursday, we'll be meeting to continue the next steps. Because the first step is this easement agreement. And then, the next step is we have to figure out how we can pay to get this road put in. I know we do have a grant for four thousand dollars, I believe, from the Rockfall Foundation, which will certainly help to get the ball rolling, but it's going to cost more than that. So, we're going to have to come up with a plan. And so, I look forward to working with you both and thank you, thank you both for coming tonight. So, did you, does anybody want to say anything on this?
The spokesperson right over here, Rick's got a speech.
Rick, come on, come on up and say a few words.
Lou just volunteered me.
Where's your kayak, Rick?
No, it's home. Rick Scharr, one sixty-eight Middle Hattam Road. And that's where a few of my kayaks are. Well, when, I always, I don't have prepared statements, so I'm just going to speak off the cuff. But Portland has, if not the longest, some of the longest coastline on the Connecticut River of any town in the state. I think we have the longest coastline. And we have a lot of undeveloped public land along the river, but there's no access. And it always bothered me. I started kayaking about twenty-five years ago. And I remember putting in off Route seventeen A, just north of Middlesex Marina and almost killing myself going down the rocks there and the poison ivy and whatnot. And I've pretty much kayaked every stretch of the river from Glastonbury, actually Hartford to Long Island Sound. Anyway, I'm a member of Connecticut River Conservancy and Rockfall Foundation. And those groups, among others, really support river ecology and river access. And they're behind this project. People from the Connecticut River Conservancy have come down a few times. And we've walked, we've actually walked from Tryon Street in South Glastonbury down through the meadows, all the way down to the fairgrounds. Then we got in our cars, we came to the current riverfront park, walked that, went down to Tilcon and walked in there. And of all the spots, the most feasible seems to be this area behind Tilcon where we have something like fifteen hundred feet of riverfront. We own all the land between Merritt and Boat Club and Riverside Marina. But you can't, it's difficult to get at, but yet, it's, the riverfront there is out of the main current, which I know was a concern with some of, some people. And it's just a great natural area. I mean, it needs a lot of, it needs a lot of attention, cleanup, it's overgrown and whatnot. But I think this is a good first step. I mean, the easement doesn't cost us anything. I don't expect the town to have to go to the taxpayers and have them foot the bill. But, you know, maybe we could get some help from Public Works. And we'll talk more about this, I guess, if you folks approve this easement. But, you know, I've got some ideas about fundraising and, you know, maybe it, I just look at what we did at the riverfront park with the groundstone quorum. It took a long time, but I think we could do it again. And it's something Portland can be proud of. If you go downriver like to a town like Essex, there's all sorts of river access spots in that town. And I think it'll be, it'll bring some economic development in direct. You know, people will come to town to access, use our resources, just like they do now with the golf courses and whatnot. And hopefully, some of our small businesses can benefit from this, you know, development down the road. So, I'm in favor of it, I hope you look favorably upon it. Any questions or?
Thank you, Rick. Thank you very much. Any of the, do any of the selectmen have any comments on this?
Ryan, I do. Yeah, I'm very proud guys, you did a great work on this, it's a great idea and it looks like it's going to come to fruition, which is awesome. So, with this easement that's coming up through Tilcon, and if we invest any kind of money into this, like, what if Tilcon sells? Will we have the first right to refusal of the property of Tilcon? Say they go out of business, I don't know, hypothetically. If we invest all this money, Tilcon sells and then we lose the easement. I'm just worried about the future of, do you guys know any of these?
I think I can answer that.
I think, well, that'd be an attorney question.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, it's an attorney question, but.
But I think the easement travels with the land.
The eas, correct, the easement travels with the land.
It should be put on their deed that it's an easement forever.
So, it stays with, okay.
If this goes on the land records and then it goes with the property forever, so.
Great, that's what I wanted to hear then, thank you.
Yeah, good question.
Yeah, I guess the only thing I would just note, you know, I'm certainly in favor of this. We've certainly talked endlessly about trying to find a location along the river to provide this access. I just want to thank Tilcon again, because obviously, they've been a great partner with the town, allowing us to use that area that we put a baseball field on for many years. So, they continue to be good to the town and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Ralph. Yeah, Tilcon has been a wonderful partner with the town of Portland for many years. As you mentioned with the baseball field, I know I played ball there, I don't know if anybody else did, but yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
I just, I want to take this opportunity, I mean, I appreciate Tilcon one hundred percent, but these two guys here, Lou and Rick, I mean, I know they've taken this bull by the horns. You know, and as somebody who knows the river and paddles a kayak like Rick does, this is great. Portland has some of the most, probably, as Rick said, probably the most riverfront of any town in Connecticut. The unfortunate problem is access. And the other thing is we have a beautiful park, but that park, because it was where the quarry operation was, is on the channel. And I've tried to launch kayaks down there too and you'll get yourself killed. So, I mean, when I was a very youngster, Memorial Day weekend, they used to have hydroplane races on the river. Little miniature hydroplanes that would race up and down. And people would line up on both sides of the river. And that was the area where Merritt and Yacht Club is and beyond, where I remember as a really young boy sitting with my parents, under the willows and that sandy beach. I know, it's a beautiful area, it was, it was just, this is gold and I really appreciate you guys for pursuing this.
Would someone like to introduce, read and move the resolution?
I'll do it. Appreciate it. Resolution Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Permanent access and parking easement agreement between the Town of Portland, Tilcon Incorporated. Whereas Tilcon Incorporated, a Connecticut corporation with its principal office located in the Town of New Britain, County of Hartford and State of Connecticut, is the owner of certain real property located in said Town of Portland, Connecticut, consisting of three parcels located along Airline Avenue and described more particularly as follows. Parcel number ten dash thirty-two, ID number zero 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 one four one zero zero, one point six one acres. Parcel number ten dash thirty-three, ID number zero 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 one four two zero zero, five acres. And parcel number ten dash thirty-four, ID number zero 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 one four three zero zero, seventeen point four three acres. And whereas the easement shall be for the following purposes. Permanent access and public parking for Town of Portland Riverfront Nature Trail. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen for the Town of Portland hereby approves of and accepts the easement from Tilcon Incorporated for the permanent access and public parking for Town of Portland Riverfront Nature Trail along Airline Avenue.
Is there a second?
A second.
I just want to point out, John, you read one point six one acres, it's sixteen point one acres, that's.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so parcel, that was parcel.
ID number zero 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 one four one zero zero, sixteen point one acres. A little dyslexic there, thank you.
No, thank you. Any further discussion on this or? So, then I'll call for the question, all in favor of the resolution of permanent access and parking easement agreement between the Town of Portland and Tilcon Inc., signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries, thank you all. Thank you, Rick, and thank you, Lou. All right, the next item on tonight's agenda is discussion on the second amended and restated fixed assessment agreement for Brainerd Place. And Dan Bertram from BRT is here this evening. Before we move forward with that, I will say that there was, after last week's meeting, there was, as we talked about, we went back and forth with, not really back and forth, but we agreed on an extension on paper here. And so, what we did was, we took what we talked about at the last meeting and we put it into this agreement. So, I'll just quickly highlight what's changed here. So, what this amended and restated agreement is saying is that first, there will be an additional thirty day extension to April thirtieth to file building permit E, that's building E. And then, there is an additional extension for building D. And Dan, that's the Starbucks building, correct? Yes, okay. And so, that would be June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And the file for building permit for the Brainerd House and the Sage House would be September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Eight point five is comply with requirements for the Hart Jarvis Building is outlined in Portland Planning and Zoning Commission's approval. And eight point six, complete the merger of the separate parcels into one parcel by April thirty, twenty twenty-two. So, there are two items on here that are, the deadline is April thirtieth. And that's building permit E as well as the merging of the parcels. And I just want to highlight that BRT has agreed to cover the legal expenses with this of two thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. And they will have offered to pay a non-refundable sum of five thousand dollars to be applied to building permit E upon execution of this, of this document. So, those are, those are what's changed. Dan, do you have anything to, anything to say on that or did I cover it? Thank you, yeah, we're looking forward to seeing, seeing more progress. I know we all, I know you are too.
I just have one question. When it comes to eight point five, this is comply with requirements for Hart Jarvis, what are the main requirements for Hart Jarvis?
The approval calls for the allocation on business and building type of the building. Requires the Delft to allocate space for it to be moved, right? And that's on the southwest corner of the site. And that is not building, it is the best, the kind that they talked about last week, I don't know if it's nine or ten, but. And your question in a technical way is that we're allocating the building space for it to. If we end up doing something different, it would be with the force of the commission. And so, I think that would be with this.
Do you have an idea of when the house needs to be moved for your needs?
No. I guess that's, that's, sorry. It's, I don't know, we're, we are certainly going to do everything possible and necessary to get Starbucks open for their requirement as soon as possible. And so, our estimates are to revolve around that as well. But that's the best I can do.
Okay. So, I have a question with regards to, so I thought at one point it sounded like you may have to move that building so that you could allow access, access through the, through Main Street coming in, you know, near where would be a CVS we've talked about. Is there still a need for you to move that building, to move it along? Or is it fall back to later in the process?
That's a great question. I think that it's not clear to me when exactly that's to move. I have viewed it as a constraint, I need to move in day one, right, from day one. So, it could find me staying like that. The analysis I've been doing from late is just running out of different scenarios. It felt like it's not our problem. And so, I'd like to keep working on that and I'll report back to maybe. It could be completely different from our plan. Right now, I guess my two cents is that it's paying a lot of attention and we'll include what we can and cannot tolerate. So, it's basically, I guess, the best way I can put it. Something that did change, and I haven't really sat with it, was when we did a misting around of our access to the drive-throughs of Starbucks, to preserve the Starbucks building, if it's part of the new Starbucks. But we added reservations, I think, in the project. Kind of connect it between your location and your name, so you can get right off the right, and you can move it. And it's all part of it. And so, from that perspective, I'm looking at the Hart Jarvis house with some of the bricks and everything that's mine. I'm not sure we can work with it, right, based on the decoration that they already made. But that can be determined, we don't have a good game to determine if it's on the, on the, on the requirements.
Okay, thanks.
I would just like to say, I think a lot of the residents here in town are appreciative that you've, that they're seeing some work in progress going on, which is great. And I think the board here has been very receptive and lenient to you two. It seems to me like since December thirty-first, when the first date was due, you pretty much will have almost a six month extension. And I just wanted you to know that we're trying to work with you here. And we appreciate what you're doing, if you appreciate what we're doing, is what I'm saying. So, thank you very much.
I see that and I do appreciate it.
Okay.
And in a lot of ways, I'll say this, it's the cooperation that makes us feel comfortable taking the deal and starting this job and it's, they're known in parts of it, right? And so, it is going to be something that we have to continue to collaborate on this too. The block, the ones that get in and out, that we have to decide pieces of our line that we're up. And so, we definitely, we appreciate the, the, the.
Thank you.
Any other questions for you? Thank you, Dan, for coming and look forward to continuing to watch the progress here, thank you. All right, well, I think we can move on to the next item, which is action items. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Sure. Resolution Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Resolution authorizing the fixing of real estate property assessments. Be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby approves the second amended and restated fixed assessment agreement dated March eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, originally approved March fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, amended October fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, between the Town of Portland and BRT DeMarco PTP LLC and authorizes Ryan J. Curly, the first selectman, to sign the fixed assessment agreement on the town's behalf.
Is there a second?
I make this.
Thank you, Sean. I just want to point out, it's a, it was amended October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, for the record, not the fifteenth. Any, any further discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the resolution of the Board of Selectmen, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the fixing of real property assessments, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries, thank you all, and thanks again, Dan.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night. All right. And we do have public comment with this meeting, so is there any public comment in the audience? Is there any public comment in the chat? With that, with no public comment, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Thank you. And thank you, Bobby, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. And we'll see you at seven o'clock. The time is seven o'clock, so we will get started with our Board of Selectmen budget workshop. Today, the first item we have is the Board of Education and we. Today, the first item we have is the Board of Education, and we have our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Charles Britton here. Charles, would you like to come up and take the stage? So, I believe, so the Selectmen, I believe everyone was present at last week's public hearing where we watched your video, I think, and thank you for that. And so, but if you could give us, you know, a summary.
Sure, well, thank you for letting me present that way. As you can see, I'm recovering here, but, you know, that was not a good day. I was definitely a little loopy, so you did not want me presenting in person, so I was glad I was able to put that video together for you. You know, but I just wanted to kind of reiterate with respect to how we built the budget this year. We were very conscious this year to make sure that we aligned every nickel of our budget in some way to the board goals that we set out. So, what I presented to you and the community was not only the fiscal resources we need, but I think it's pretty much the vision for the district for at least the next several years, right? And we have a lot going on here. But I do think we have our priorities straight, right? Continuing to maximize the health and safety of our students, focusing on some of the pretty serious social and emotional needs that our students are facing as we're coming out of the pandemic. Certainly, our focus on equity, our planning for the years to come with respect to our facility needs, right? And we have a committee that's working really hard on that. And actually, next Monday night, we have a very consequential meeting with our architects to start actually getting some numbers attached to some of these options that we're looking at. So, I would say that all of the dollars in the budget are aligned to our board goals, and that, you know, as you ask me questions about any of the allocations, I would love to be able to not only answer the questions about the allocations, but reflect on how those allocations are supporting us in our efforts to move the district forward over the rest of this year and in the years to come. So, with that said, were there any specific questions you had, or, you know, happy, I'd be happy to answer, and Stephanie's here, and, you know, we can go down to as granular detail as you need.
A little bit to the Selectmen? No? Semi-granular.
Okay.
Do what, what would you be using, using this as the guide, or?
Well, I tell you what, why don't we, we start with the big picture then? You know, the percent increase that we're looking for year over year is 2.75%. And that compares to 2.76% last year, and then I gave you a four-year look back, it was 2.26% and 2.42%. So, this year, we're bringing forward a request of $22,792,909, which represents, again, a 2.75% increase year over year. Now, as we're all aware, you know, Stephanie and I are very conscious of many of the increases that we're experiencing as a function of inflation and some of the things happening on the world stage. Right now, we're pretty comfortable that 2.75% is what we need to get us started for next year, and Stephanie and I are going to be watching very carefully as we consider gas and oil and the effects of inflation, and pretty much everything is going up across the board. So, I think we're heading into a difficult year, I have to be completely honest. I think that you're probably hearing that from all of your department heads. But, you know, again, we wanted to start at a place that we thought was reasonable and doable, but I would be concerned about going much below that, especially in these relatively uncertain times. With respect to that, though, that 2.75% generally puts us in a pretty strong position. You know, we're not looking for any cuts to faculty and staff, and I think we're going to be able to maintain most of our faculty and staff. There is one position that we're bringing back, it's an administrative position, which is an assistant principal. That individual has responsibility for athletics. We made a change in the past. Portland High School had an athletic director. We sort of reflected on that position and made a decision that the athletic department is a little too small to merit a full-time administrative position. What we really need is an assistant principal, you know, to help with both schools, you know, keep an eye on things, keep the kids safe, but also manage athletics. So, I worked with the Administrators Association, and that's one change. That's not really a new position in the district. That's a change from athletic director to assistant principal, and that individual has responsibilities for athletics. Aside from that, we did add a few paraprofessional positions into the budget. Paraprofessionals work directly one-on-one with our neediest students for a variety of different reasons. But we are seeing some increased student needs in our special education programming, and those additional paraprofessionals are going to make sure our kids' needs are met at the very micro classroom level. Aside from that, I would generally describe this as a pretty status quo budget. The one thing I do want to point out is, we haven't brought forward this year, aside from our conversations about the track, any major requests for capital improvements. Generally, Carl's here, and he can answer those questions for you. The budget next year helps us maintain our existing facilities. We know that we have a lot of facility needs across our buildings, particularly at Valleyview Gildersley and Brownstone, but we decided to kind of hold off on bringing forward any major requests for capital improvements until this facilities study committee does its work, right? So, I'm hoping that by June, we're going to be able to come forward with the report that you commissioned this committee to bring to you. And then next year, we can talk about a modernization plan that will include some recognition of the needs that the facilities have across the district. So, generally speaking, this budget, I think, keeps us on the course that we're headed. It keeps us in a good position and allows us to move forward and build on a lot of the fine things we've accomplished this year. One other thing I just wanted to point out, with respect to the ESER money, the federal funds that we received for the coronavirus relief, I know I mentioned it in the video, but I did just want to bring out, we do have $312,000 left of that funding that is available to us. Now, that funding is available to us as part of a three-year grant, so it's available to us this year, next year, and the year after, right? Now, we do have well more than half of that money already either spent or earmarked for social workers, some paraprofessionals, and then some summer learning programs that we're going to do this summer, next summer, and the summer after. My recommendation at this point, though, is with respect to that $312,000, let's keep that in the back. I think it would be wise not to earmark that now for a couple of reasons. One, while we all hope we're out of the pandemic, you know, I think we still need at least another couple of months to, you know, really make sure we've turned that corner, God willing. And then, you know, if we are truly out of the pandemic, that money can certainly be allocated for things to help our students recover from any learning loss that was sustained during the pandemic, and it can also be used for some facilities projects, specifically things that might help us improve our indoor air quality. So, some of our HVAC systems, or whack thereof, in some of our schools need work. So, if we get to a point where we have some of that funding available for the next two years, this might help us start chip away, chipping away at some of those capital projects that I imagine is going to come out of recommendations from this facilities study committee. So, we have a lot of balls in the air, but, again, with respect to the year-over-year budget, I think 2.75% I hope is perceived as reasonable, and I think it helps us, you know, continue to make sure your children are getting a great education, which I guarantee you they are.
So, I just, I have a question. Obviously, over time, we've talked about a lot about these projects and the schools. I'm just curious, I know that, and I don't remember when it was, but I remember being in Valleyview as garbage pails were in the hallway collecting water coming out of the ceiling. I'm just curious about that one, because obviously, I know, the intent is, let's leave everything alone, because we got to find out what we're going to do going forward. I'm just curious about that issue that Valleyview had, is where does that stand?
It's still there. Carl, do you want to help out with that?
Yeah.
It's, the issue's still there, and it involves the chimney, and...
Yeah, I know it involved the chimney, and I know that's a bigger project.
And literally which way the wind blows. So, you know, Carl can give you an update on that.
So, that's all part of the big project, though. That, I had a quote for $68,000 to take the chimney down to a certain point, then they would encapsulate it in steel. If we were to probably renovate that school completely, the entire chimney would come down, and we would put a whole new manifold in the boiler room, and then come up with a steel stack like they have, like you see at the high school when you pull up the driveway. Things have changed a lot, obviously, since we talked about that project. When we get wind out of the southwest, that's when we seem to get water in there, but it's like finding a needle in a haystack.
Oh, yeah, I know those talents.
I just, we've kind of put the project on hold until we decide, if we start heading in a direction where we know we're definitely, I don't want to, keeping that, then maybe we can fix that earlier.
Yeah, no, the reason I ask is, obviously, we talk about it, it's a couple of years down the road, probably, and so that was pretty stuck in my head, and that's why I was curious. Does that mean, do we somehow find a, we're actually a stopgap way, or it sounds like, no, we just got to hope the wind blows it?
Yeah, it'd be a lot of new ceiling tiles.
It is, it is, in a certain small area. So, close some of it up a little bit better, and, you know, if you want to move in that direction to do the project, we can serve you.
Oh, no, I'm just, I was just asking. I mean, I realize the challenge of where we are, but I'm just curious.
And in fairness, Carl would be the first to tell you that all of our, I mean, we haven't visited the Gildersley and looked at the parking lot recently. You know, there are, all of our buildings have considerable work that needs to be done. But, you know, this year, we made a decision that before we came forward with any $68,000 or other requests, we really needed to let the committee do its work, so that we could come forward with a more comprehensive plan that was a little less pieced together. Because, you know, the committee's going to be bringing forward, I think, some suggestions that may involve moving on from some of these, may. We have, we have work to do. We are, that is not, you know, in cards right now, I'm not prepared to say that, but, you know, we don't want to go, you know, sinking money into anything until we know what Portland will look like over the next five, ten years, which is, in essence, the exciting work that's happening right now. And our next meeting date is April 4th, and, you know, lots of things to talk about.
Thanks for the update.
I have a question for you. So, last year during the budget season, we accomplished getting a $1.5 million capital lease for the Board of Ed and the town side. We used some of that money to buy Chromebooks last year. Do you have an, have a number of Chromebooks we bought last year?
Five hundred, five seventy-five.
Five seventy-five. And in this year's budget, you are also proposing to buy more Chromebooks?
So, what's exciting about that is, we received another grant called the Connectivity Grant.
Okay.
We received, it's in two batches. The first batch is $165,000, and the second batch is $80,000. That's federal money that was also connected to coronavirus relief. Really, that's going to allow us to purchase the next half of the Chromebooks. So, we're not, we don't have that anywhere in our budget. That's something that we received a grant for.
What's, all right, what's the next half? How much would that buy? How many Chromebooks?
Four eighty. Yeah, we'd have to get you the exact...
Hundred and seventy-five, roughly?
Well, it's a hundred, there's, it's in two batches. There's $165,000, and then there's $80,000, so...
Oh, and you think it'll be about 400 Chromebooks?
No, we're not using all the funding for the Chromebooks. We're, we're going to push out 175 Chromebooks, and the rest is hardware, because hopefully...
That's right. Smartboards, projectors, teacher replacement, desktops, other types of hardware.
And I'm just like thinking forward, are you guys going to have a rotation of yearly, what are you guys going to look for every year for Chromebooks?
So, the ones that we buy will get everybody up to having a couple more Chromebooks, and then in probably two years, I would think, two to three years, you would have to start to get through...
The whole, the cycle again, like, you would need another 575 Chromebooks?
Let's say go to the leasing, you know, like years online, you don't know, like what you can go to leasing on again, or just start a, or something else again.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm getting at. Do you have a replacement cycle in plan where every year, you're just going to do 120, and then carry on and so on? Every year, just ask for that money, and rotate them out? Instead of getting hit with this big number every couple of years, like, do you have a plan in place for that?
We do, yes. We have a, we have an entire hardware replacement cycle that were, that, we actually developed it three years ago, and we've been following it. We've been actually pretty good about keeping up with it. I certainly could provide you a copy of that, and I know our new Director of Curriculum Instruction and Technology, my former role, has that laid out, and we could provide that to you. Our problem with the Chromebooks, and all of our technology, of course, is that, over the years, we sort of bought different amounts at different times, and they, a lot of them are coming out from under warranty at different times. It's not like we bought them all at once and then have to replace them all at once again. There's, there are different models, N21s, N22s, that are still in rotation. This second purchase of 175 will get us on a more consistent cycle and allow us to cycle out the ones that are essentially paperweights at this point. But the funding that you provided us last year with the lease was very helpful and very much appreciated, and I see the kids using those new under-warranty devices, particularly at the middle school and high school, every day. So, thank you for that. But between that and this connectivity grant that we received, we're going to be in really good shape with respect to Chromebooks for at least the next two years. But then, yes, we're going to have to, you know, continue to cycle things, cycle them through. And again, mostly, that's a function of when they come out from under warranty.
Both, are these a five-year warranty?
Is it a four- or five-year warranty?
Four-year.
You have to remember, we, there was a backlog last year, we got 100 from the state for free, for COVID money, and then we purchased about 200. So, those ones may be the first set coming out in four years, three, four years after all, because they only had, the 400 from the state only have one-year warranty, we purchased the three-year extended, get it on there to plan up with the other ones, three-year, those two, 275 or whatever it was from last year, will be the first set they're going to have to come off in two years, just like. So, they're, they're in batches of lease, so it's not, it just, it was a portrait of last year, past year with the COVID, or this year for the price of the price that we did.
Yep, okay. Yeah, I'd like to see that plan, if you can email it to me.
Sure.
At your convenience, no rush on that, but, thank you.
Any other questions? So, I'll just mention, we got the, we're going to work on the track, right? It's something that we'll work on with an RFP soon, right?
Yeah, I think we're going with, working on RFQ, and then from that, we would follow up with an RFP. Stephanie and Tom are hard at work putting that together.
I have one question. What is the difference between coaching salaries and extracurricular salaries?
Extracurricular, that, with that, with all of our stipend?
Right, so the coaching salaries are all the musical, sports, the extracurricular, all the activities, um...
Musical stipend.
Yeah, the, or the musical, um...
The classiver.
Of, um, curriculum.
Yeah, I think that would be a different, but it's a lot of the clubs and activities, the teachers run, ski club, oh my God, we have a list in there of dozens and dozens of, you know, things that teachers run after school with their students, not the least of which was, I hope you got to see Little Mermaid, so, that was great, so that would be one of them.
Okay. Play once?
Yeah, they'll be there.
Twice. Well, thank you, Charles.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Carl, and thank you, Stephanie, for all your, all your work on this. And also, to the Board of Education who are here as well, thank you all for coming tonight. This point is, I think Tom's in the hallway. We're going to move on to Public Works. I know our Public Works Director, Bob Shea, is here as well. Thank you, Bob, for coming. I think we'll just wait one moment for Tom, so... Is Tom in the hallway? Do you know where? Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, thank you, Mike.
Page 57, thank you.
Thank you. Fifty-seven, yeah, I think so, let's see. Thank you, Mike.
Hi, Tom, how you doing?
So, we'll move on with Public Works and other related funds.
Okay. So, we're going to go to page 57?
So we're gonna go to page fifty-seven? Okay, page fifty-seven starts with the public works director budget. Public works director budget is made up of the public works official and his administrative assistant. Other items within that budget are for meetings and dues, and the hazardous weight, the household hazardous waste, um, amounts. There's been changes in that program, so there's times, it's, uh, it seems like it continues to go up because of the vendor relationship contained, as well as there's quite a bit of usage from the participants, so that's one of those ones that does swing, um, every year, so you'll see a slight increase in that, and we'll keep monitoring that. Page fifty-nine is the highway budget, there is a little bit of a decrease in the payroll, and that was, there was a, there was some transition of employees. Some employees have left the town, and therefore, some of the replacements are at a lower cost. So we see a, a, a lower amount in, in that item. The overtime item in this category is more for all year-round overtime, not snow and snow removal, but, uh, some generally storm-related, and, um, sometimes in the high, in the summer times, when they're doing the roadwork, they need to do that on, um, different hours or additional, uh, times. Uh, also, you know, if there are, um, storms where there's trees down and things of that nature, that, there's pollen. The remainder of that budget, one of the bigger increases, as we had spoken about, is the gas and diesel estimate, that's utilizing around the three dollar per gallon for the gas and diesel. And, and you see that in five one oh oh one. So that was a pretty big hit in that budget, so we had to try to minimize in other areas, we did go up, um, slightly in equipment supplies, we're seeing uh, costs of equipment supplies going up, um, in, across the board, so we were trying to cover in that area. And, uh, same thing with road and materials, we see the cost of road, um, materials going up, so overall, that is a two point four increase within this budget. Uh, page sixty-one is the vehicle maintenance budget, the vehicle maintenance budget is made up of a full-time mechanic and assistant mechanic. They're, uh, they maintain the fleet of all-town vehicles, um, that includes police, fire, highway, all the other public works, and also some of the board of ed fleets. There, here, we've, uh, tried to stabilize, uh, this increase, it's more prob, the majority of it is payroll based on contractual rates. So that's really the increases that you see in that fund. Page sixty-three is the town engineer, town engineer budget is one of the, um, there's some budget years where we're, uh, within the budget, some years we're not, the two here do show it within the, the dollar value, in the past, it had been over. There's been a quality ability because of the various projects we're running, we've been able to try to allocate items to the projects, so that's also been helpful. Uh, matter, when, when possible, we, um, allocate to the projects. Um, so there's, there are some additional, uh, needs and, and, um, items here, um, so there are areas that may possibly go over, but, uh, there, at this time, there, there wouldn't be, uh, there would be no amounts increased in this budget.
I have a quick question, so I know that we're gonna do water and sewer work, and that's require some engineering, is that accounted for here, or does that get accounted for later on?
Wa- water and sewer in what manner, a project or?
Yeah, a project.
A project would be included within the project.
Okay, so it doesn't get accounted for at all in, in this, in this line, in these light items?
If it's a specific project issue, uh, where the project has been funded, it would be in the project.
Are you talking about the Russell Avenue water main?
Yeah, yeah, that's.
And then the Russell Avenue water main, and then the pump station in that same neighborhood? That's what he's asking, it's included in the price.
They would now be in this budget.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, I'm just trying to understand, with a project, it's all gonna be contained within the project, that's just what I'm asking.
To my knowledge, at this current point, yeah, that would be where it would be, is, uh, you know, if there's some other, um, rationalization comes up why that couldn't be, which it doesn't appear that there is, then we would address that at the time.
No, I'm just, that was just a general question, I'm not.
Yeah, I mean, there are times in the water and sewer budgets where there is engineering monies for specific water and sewer matters, and there's also monies in capital where there's water and sewer matters, and there's outside funds where the ARPA money is, is another, is an outside fund, and there is, would be engineering in those items. The one that generally we're not allowed to charge, the majority of the design, is the connectivity grant, which was funded in this year's capital, and that was, the engineering is paid through by the municipal grants in aid out of Fund eighty-four as that component. And then the work that is construction would be out of the connectivity grant. And then that funding for construction administration, which is allowable, would be, uh, included, um, with inspection, more inspection than construction administration. There's some construction administrations allowable in the connectivity, but more, um, inspection, and so those are included. Otherwise, the remainder would be covered by, uh, funds in Fund eighty-four.
Okay, thanks.
Page sixty-five is, uh, street lighting, there's a two percent, two and a half percent increase in street lighting, and that's more on the distribution side, um, as we have a, a pretty good, um, improved, we, we did have an improved rate, uh, ink, uh, for the supply, but we do have, uh, we've been seeing an increase in distribution.
Tom, I just have a quick question, a lo, a number of the lights in town have been replaced to that more energy-efficient lighting? Has that made any impact on our proposed costs?
Yeah, you've seen that in the past years, and it's been, you know, a few years now, and there's, and it's gone down, and you've seen it, you've seen it stabilized, but distribution continues to go up, there was a decent increase in the past years, so, um, it's more on the distribution side.
Right.
But yeah, it was definitely, um, in the, in the, in the prior budget, uh, uh, in, as well as, you know, as we stated, that, that, those, the savings do seem to continue within the, uh, in the supply side. Yeah, I mean, and that would correlate to delivery as well.
Mm-hmm.
So definitely, yeah, those are good improvements, uh, they were good improvements. Uh, page sixty-seven is the ground maintenance budget, the grounds maintenance budget has three full-time employees and one part-time. The, during their request, they did ask for a fourth, um, uh, full-time employee that was not, uh, was not funded in this budget. Um, so they have the, uh, salaries or the contractual, um, amounts for the, uh, current employees. We went slightly up on the, uh, part-time, uh, employees, we're thinking with the park being fully ours, that they're the essential items for additional time needed there. Uh, the overtime here for the grounds department is all, all, uh, all overtime, um, that includes snow removal, um, so in a heavy year like fiscal twenty-two's been with snow removal, you'll see that that's, you know, it'll be, we're at the number, probably over on that number. On other years, when it's lighter, you'll see lighter amounts. Um, there, there's various work in here for the general contract work, um, some, um, estimates in there, as well as the potential for the splash pad, uh, maintenance, if there needs to be oil work within that, um, we'll have to see how that works out. They have been doing pretty well within their gas and diesel budget line, so we stayed, um, we didn't go up very, we didn't go up as we had gone up on other areas. Hopefully, that, um, that will be able to maintain, uh, we are seeing, uh, some, we've seen additional increases in, uh, ground supplies as well. Page sixty-nine has, this is the building maintenance for all-town buildings, there are three full-time employees in this budget, and the one oh oh one, uh, is the contractual amounts for those employees. Service contracts is a lot mostly to do, most, most likely, the highest number component of that is our HVAC contracts, but there, but there are other, um, items, there, there are definitely other service contracts within that, there's, um, the, the type of fire alarms, there's pest control, um, various, uh, contractual types of arrangements that would be needed, but HVAC is a, HVAC and, uh, i- is a, is a decent component of that number. As you go down, the remainder of this budget has mostly been kept intact, um, some slight increases with custodial supplies as we anticipate the, those two go up, as well as building supplies, we have that increasing, it seems, seems like with the additional work and additional costs with the current team, um, they're getting projects done and, and items completed, so with that, you need to have the building supplies intact. It's a three point four nine percent increase. Uh, page seventy-one is our snow removal budget, um, so this budget, you know, uh, can fluctuate definitely by the year, by the issue, by the item, um, so we've been trying to creep this budget up in time to get it to a more stable, because there was a long period of time where overtime wasn't increased in that, so we're trying to continue as, as time goes on, um, you know, the, the overtime wages generally go up there, as you can see, like in twenty-one, there was some considerable overtime there, so, uh, we went up, uh, this for a slight amount of money here within the overtime line, and that's, uh, what we recommended for that increase. Three point six. So that is, uh, the general fund components, uh, for the public works department. There are, um, on page one oh seven, there's a few transfers that are, um, for public works and, uh, Board of Ed, they, uh, nine oh three is the building maintenance fund, we have a building maintenance fund, Fund eleven, where we transfer in, uh, about forty-one thousand for the town and forty-one thousand for the board annually, um, so that, uh, projects that don't fall, either don't fall or are not funded within the capital, or there's this, uh, or, or they're bigger projects that, that are not uh, able to be handled within the operating fund, um, fall within to that, into that fund. Um, we have a transfer out to resource recovery of one ninety-eight, nine nine six, um, the fifty-eight seven, five eight seven eight five oh for transfer other is actually transferred to the water fund for fire, um, hydrant, usage and maintenance. We will get to the park and rec fund, that has a transfer out of nine, two forty-three, nine sixty. Um, the open space transfer is a transfer for, based on, um, the ordinances, it's a required transfer out, and then we have the, uh, amounts for, uh, capital non-recurring for the town of thirty-two thou, uh, three hundred and twenty-two thousand, and for the Board of Ed for twelve thousand, which is causing an increase, uh, of thirty-seven point oh one percent in, in this, uh, this area. So we go to, um, page one thirteen, uh, which is the sewer fund. So the sewer fund is, um, the, the, the sewer and the water fund are often driven by expenditures, and then the revenues are estimated to be, to be back into that, uh, funding stream, so we did not really change much in the revenue side, other than increasing the user charges to go up to meet the demands of the, um, of the expenditures. So going to one fourteen, the expenditures here make up of, um, three, there's three, uh, main employees in the sewer plant, and then there's a half-time of the sewer, water and sewer clerk, the other half of that goes to the water side. Um, we have the board clerk, then there's the related, um, the related personnel and fringe benefit expenditures of the, of the, uh, the individuals within those funds and the pension contributions. Um, the service contract, um, one of the, uh, main things that was not in twen, fiscal twenty-one was the, uh, pipe cleaning. Due to COVID, we were unable to get that accomplished, so you'll, that will, you know, if, if, uh, that was accomplished, we'd be right into where our budgetary numbers, um, are. Uh, as you see here on three eight oh one oh, if there's certain items that would be, uh, not, uh, not, it would be engineering, but maybe on a smaller scale for the sewer department, they would be in this budget, but, um, most of the ones were project-driven, so they were within Fund Eight, which was a capital fund. Electricity, uh, has, has gone up in this, in this fund, there's, you know, there, there's a heavy amount of equipment utilization, um, and there has activity, um, I think, a lot with the COVID, there was a much more, I think there was more activity in the water and sewer side, so there was additional, uh, expenditures in this fund, so we, we made, um, an estimate there of a potential increase in that as well for next year. And then the request of the capital non-recurring will be supported by the, uh, back schedule, um, in capital, in, in the capital fund, so that's a three point oh three percent increase to the expenditures for this budget. On page one sixteen, similar type of scenario with, uh, water, um, the, the revenue side is, is significantly driven by, um, by the expenditures, there also was a few, um, additional changes that had, uh, last year that had gone into effect that were part of the year, so we're, we're, we're thinking that some of the areas, such as like the meter charges, will hit, or get very close to the number in the budget, because this will be a full year of the prior years, previous years' increases. Um, so, um, that is, um, where you're seeing the increase, the, to, of the increase in the fund, when majority of that went to meter sales, that's where it generally goes within this budget, is the offset area, um, and then the fifty-eight seven, uh, fifty-eight thousand seven fifty is the transfer in from the general fund that we spoke about on the other page, you see, that was an outflow, this is the inflow. The water department is made up of two employees that are water employees, and then there's the other part of the water and sewer clerk, um, is in this budget, that their related expenditures and, um, overtime for the projects, uh, for the teams are in here for the employees. We, we don't, we don't expect a, a large, large increase in water, it seems like MDC has, uh, come in with a, a, a more reasonable number this year, so as you see, you'll see that, uh, increases estimated based on their, their increase. The other, uh, items within here are just items within the, uh, the request from the director, um, and, uh, and expectations of various areas where that we will have, uh, potential increases. And both the water and sewer, I'm sorry, um, sewer, uh, debt is, has come clean off as of fiscal twenty-one, and on water, uh, you'll see that there are still, um, some, some clean water notes, those were the, uh, high-street, uh, water main project and the water tanks projects that we did a few years back. But on the water, on the sewer side, the, uh, debt has come off, and that's why you're seeing the higher increase into the transition into capital. Generally, when debt goes down, you try to increase capital, um, I think we did attempt to do that on the water side last year when some debt fell off, and that was, we were not able to make that work with the, uh, required increases. There's a slight increase in this year's capital on water, um, and there was more or less this fund of specific, uh, projects that were noted. Um, and there was more or less this fund of specific, uh, projects that were noted. Next page is one twenty two, which is the town aid road fund. The town aid road fund is a state grant that is a great program that we receive that helps us allows us to chip seal and make other road improvements. It's a main, um, public works activity, um, every every year. So this is a a great, a great, uh, grant program, a great fund. And, um, it's a pure, um, whatever we get from the state and then, uh, we spend those on road materials. So, um, there's an expectation of two thirty nine oh fifty six with, uh, related expenditures. Page twenty twenty seven is the resource recovery fund. Resource recovery fund is more or less the transfer station. In the miscellaneous, it's there's, uh, some rental property for the rental income that we get from, um, clothing recyclers. The, uh, facility permit increase that we had implemented seems to more or less gotten to where our expectation was on the permit revenue. So that's, um, uh, worked out o- okay. Um, we hope that the sale of metal will continue to be, um, strong, the recycling of metal will be strong. Uh, bags are are diff- are are, so we do a pay as you throw model, you know, the people have to buy the bags to throw out their garbage. Um, there's some, sometimes we're able to meet their goals and some we are not. We have, um, lowered some of the expectations of our revenue there, um, as we had not hit that, uh, the, uh, projected numbers for a few years now. So, uh, we, um, we were not expecting that we were gonna, you know, somehow, uh, get to that number. Bulky waste of revenue, uh, we had an increase in that, uh, expense and therefore we think that, uh, the charge. So we think that we were able to generate more, uh, bulky waste, uh, amounts there. And then last year was the first year of the brush. So we think we're gonna be able to generate close to that amount of, uh, revenue for the brush pickup. Uh, the transfer in the account, uh, is the transfer from general fund that makes up, uh, the difference between, uh, more or less again expenditure driven with, uh, revenue that we we hope to, uh, to to bring in. Some of these things, when we bring in revenue, we have to kind of offset it with an increase to expense. So sometimes it's it's hard when you increase revenues, you have to almost increase expense with it in some areas. The the resource recovery has two employees in that, they have their related benefits in the top section. Then the, uh, service contract is much of that, there is, uh, some items in that are for the software, for the scale. And a good, uh, portion of that is when we do brush grinding, um, we have a contract, a service contract for that component. Um, the tipping, you you got, you all have been apprised of the various activities with the tipping, uh, fees. And and you made some, uh, approvals on the those type of agreements. So you see those, uh, you see some of that, uh, related activity and work within page one twenty nine and eight eight oh one two and eight eight oh one. Well, it's eight eight oh one two. Page one thirty is the building maintenance fund. The building maintenance fund, the resource funds that the town and the board utilize to do various, um, project work or or items, uh, repairs that are not within our budget. Better operating budget, they can't be funded there or other types of, uh, of projects. And, uh, it's a, it's been very, very effective for both, um, the town and the board, um, to, uh, get get projects completed. Um, so that, um, money was on not increased this year, but it would it remained stable. So those are the, those are the public works ones, the last, um, uh, special revenue type fund that we have to talk about tonight is the parks and rec, uh, fund. So the parks and rec fund you see has a decent sized increase in, uh, in the transfer. The transfer this year was a hundred ninety three seven hundred, next year a two forty three nine sixty. Majority of that is, uh, is directly related to, um, there was ARPA funds that were considered to be, um, included for, um, fiscal year twenty two. Uh, spoken with the director and we're we're reviewing and, uh, the director, myself, first of all, we're reviewing the US of, you know, what, you know, what can we get completed? Can we complete items within that of the ARPA funds within this fund? Um, or is there additional general fund items that would need to be brought over in fiscal twenty two to cover, uh, some of that and use the ARPA funds on some other task? But in next year's budget, the ARPA funds were not included and therefore that was replaced within this. The parks and rec fund is, uh, is very much a work in process, um, with the with the COVID era era. So we're just, uh, trying to hopefully get fiscal twenty three back into, um, the pre-pandemic, uh, situation and program activity and level. Uh, one of the main things that they, uh, did start with this year, um, they did start back the kids blast program, which previously used to be in the youth, um, youth area, um, it had just currently does not have as many, uh, participants as it did prior to the pandemic. Um, but those are things that they're, you know, continue to work on growing, um, that project as well, as well as all the other projects that this, uh, department has, uh, run. There's, uh, two major main employees are the director and, uh, the clerical staff. And then there are a various team of, uh, temporary payroll via the kids blast, uh, personnel and employees. And the teen recreation payroll is all other types of, um, employees that would work to help support the, we call it teen recreation, but it's the, it's the, it's the recre- the, uh, the park and rec activities that they they do within the, within the, uh, town here. The revenues on the charge for services, flipping back, sorry, on the page there, but we, uh, the 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 director thought it was to be a good idea to leave the majority of these the same as as the twenty one year obviously was was not, uh, hitting the goals that we expected. Um, in twenty two, um, you're seeing some a- in areas improvement and then there's some areas that still need, uh, work. And, uh, so that we're hopefully seeing that in two thousand twenty three, there'll be an, um, a a level brought back to where we once were. Expenditures, again, with keeping revenues, uh, very similar expenditures were kept quite similar. The, uh, on, uh, the transfer out to workers comp, that's the, that's the part, uh, the parks and recs, uh, component of the workers comp contribution. Um, with their, uh, with their increase in, uh, salary that was allocated, uh, based on teen pa- uh, payroll as well as, um, the temporary payroll and then the, uh, the employees, um, that had to be adjusted. So we had a, uh, my estimated calculation there, I had to make an adjustment based on the salary. Um, and that's why you see, uh, an increase into line nine oh oh one six. And that should be pretty close to the amounts going forward. Workers comp was more or less flat, but there was a reallocation within, uh, the global, uh, fund structure. Some of the other funds went down and this one, uh, went up due to the fact that it was taking, uh, payroll that used to be within, used to be within Fund seven and there was some of it that used to be within the general fund when, uh, the administrative assistant was split. So now we go, I can go into page one thirty five, which is, uh, the capital improvement plan. Just have a note on page, uh, one thirty five, there, the fourth paragraph down is the following details list, the two ninety, that should be three hundred and thirty four thousand, uh, dollars. I'll look at that corrected going forward. But there is, uh, the the capital plan has in it from two thousand twenty three to two thousand twenty seven, uh, forty one million, five hundred and forty one thousand, two hundred and ninety five dollars of total projects that are, you know, estimated. The first year is always, uh, what we, um, we we consider funding. The years two to five or more considered a wish list for the various entities and the, uh, in within the den departments within the town. So these are the fun, the projects that were currently, um, being funded, uh, in this budget. We have a twelve thousand for Port of Ed system wide food service equipment. Um, those are some improvements that, uh, should be made to the various food, uh, serving equipment within our, uh, our relationship with, um, our food service, uh, provider. We're, uh, supposed to try to fund, um, an amount annually, um, to make improvements to the food service line and this what this, uh, twelve thousand will will help us try to do. The building planning department was a grant match leverage. There's a, um, there was, there was a much higher request for the, uh, yearly grant, uh, match leverage. But we were, we were able to try to put, uh, twelve thousand five hundred. There's a possibility of a lower, uh, the river cog had put in some type of a grant that we may have to do a partial match with, uh, Middletown. Uh, the fire department is re- is in need of a hearse tool replacement. Also, the fire department is in need of the SCBA compressor. Uh, they received a FEMA grant to replace the bottles and, uh, the packs, which was excellent, but the FEMA would not, um, replace the compressor. So to, uh, to get that, to get everything in compliance and up to date, the compressor is, uh, needed. The library has been requesting security cameras, um, in, uh, for the library. Uh, I believe those are to be a partial, it could be inside and outside, but there, uh, there were some cameras that they've been requested and, uh, it's, uh, yes, obvious, uh, reasoning for what that would be requested for. Uh, police is, we've put, uh, put in for one, um, one SUV equipped. Um, so that would be with all the, uh, the various equipment, emergency lighting and, uh, other equipment as well as, uh, the computer, uh, laptop, uh, computer. Then this, uh, there's a DPW HVAC upgrades. Uh, this is trying to put some of the money for, um, units there, uh, within this building that we're in here and the town hall. Um, there are, uh, as well as, it could be in any area, but in any of our buildings. But there are many standalone units within, um, our buildings. And, uh, they have been failing generally, we try to track and do those within the general funds and or, um, Fund eleven. But there was, uh, a request here for a couple, uh, is is there some known, um, known units that are in the five, uh, five thousand range to be, uh, needed? So, uh, that request is made. Uh, DPW highway is the fuel pump and the reader monitoring software. Uh, that's, uh, the fifty five thousand, uh, you know, it's listed here as the highway, it's it's really every department. It's the, um, when you, when you get the the, uh, the gas and the diesel, that's what, uh, it tracks and reads and and allocates, uh, those those funds. Um, the reader system and the software is very, very, um, it's it's old, it's, uh, it's, uh, antiquated, it needs to be, uh, parts are being very hard to find to replace. So that's a, uh, that's the reason why we picked it to to fund out of the general fund taxation dollars was because, uh, if we were to to try to go into a different program like LoCIP, LoCIP doesn't become available until March of the th- of the subsequent, uh, of that year. So in this instance, it would be like March first of two thousand twenty three. That would put an awful burden on that system that's currently running, um, out there and and struggling daily. So we would be funded that. The, uh, the the wording on this, we should have probably said snow plows for pickup trucks, not pickup trucks for snow plows, that would be a great deal. Uh, eighty five hundred, but, uh, so we'll try to get that modified, but that's sort of snow plows for pickup trucks. Uh, and then there was also for the DPW highway vehicle maintenance, it's an air compressor with a sandblash unit was was needed and requested. Also for the DPW highway garage's salt dispensing for the truck computers. So on some of our, um, machine, some of our trucks that we have, the newer ones and we've done, we've retrofitted some of the other machines. We have salt dispensing, uh, computers and it helps, um, when, uh, when it's trying to dispense the salt and it tells the road temperatures and it will help to monitor and distribute that, uh, salted and more even than having to do it manually. So it's a cost savings measure if we can get those accomplished. So, uh, the thirteen five is, uh, is the next group, which is the DPW highway large dump truck plow. Again, that is the plow only. Um, the townwide computers, uh, with backup appliance, including backup appliance. So annually we try to put in, uh, an amount for computers, that's for computers for all, um, areas within the town. Um, as well as next year, we we set aside some monies in this year's budget for the backup appliance, which was actually to be scheduled for fiscal twenty, uh, three. After we did some further, uh, discussions with our vendors, the contract was actually for, uh, fiscal twenty three to be extended. So we will work on getting that, uh, contract renewed or, uh, extended, uh, the backup appliance as well as that funds any other types of computers within our, uh, our area, which would be for the town side. Which would, uh, you know, any of the departments, uh, sometimes the library, police, um, the various, uh, town buildings. We we do upgrades and as well as servers, the computer servers, any of that is, it goes into that category. Um, the townwide revaluation, there was a a plan for, uh, of the time I want to say it was forty thousand annually, um, to go into that, to that allotment. And, uh, we, uh, put in ten thousand to keep the the flow into the project as we don't want to forget that we need to do this and have that set aside and as well as there's a potential, um, subsequent work that needs to be done in the following, the the actual year. There's a continual work that needs to be done, so there was ten thousand allocated for that. And then in the water and sewer budget, you'll s- we'd put money aside for the SCADA system. And, uh, there was some additional funds for this year in that. But there was a a piece of it on the town side that we hadn't done, which was the, there's some telemetry matters and, uh, certain things just for that specific project that, uh, our our technology department stated they need around fifteen thousand dollars to help bring in this project and get it really and get that going, um, with, uh, with from the SCADA side. So that's a, will be a a very good improvement for the water department when that is able to get, um, added and implemented. From the state, uh, grants this year, we have expected allotment of sixty two, the sixty two thousand five ninety five. Where, um, there generally we allocate twenty five thousand dollars to the park and rec department. They do, uh, various, um, uh, projects and improvements. The latest one, Nate, what was the latest one that you had done there over at Bransfield Park?
Yeah, the the guy drills updated along the whole perimeter of the parking area. Yeah, he concluded an access gate for emergency blast, it's not the one with fields, but it's maybe there is a good concern.
So a good, always good, uh, uh, good activities that we can get completed and, uh, so the the town generally seems to allocate around twenty five thousand dollars to LoCIP funding for various park and, uh, you know, field improvements. The other, uh, component we allocated last, the last fiscal year was for building maintenance carpeting in the building. So we started that and we're trying to hope, maybe try to get that completed with additional thirty seven five ninety five. The library is also in their staff area. They had never gotten their, uh, carpeting, uh, improved recently. Uh, in that area, many of the other areas have been done, uh, via, um, the 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 project or other funding that we had done. Uh, I know we done, uh, the larger, um, it's the Merrick Flood Room, uh, earlier. And then, uh, the project did a good majority of the, uh, And then, uh, the project did a good majority of the, uh, where, you know, the area where the public would have access. So the following pages lists out, um, some of the plans. Although the, the board has not put a request in, uh, we do have various projects listed out, um, that we do continue just in case there is an act, uh, a grant or, um, some type of activity that, that would allow us to get funding. We try to do our best to have as reasonably updated, uh, um, capital plan as possible so that certain times, certain grants require you to have activities in them. So we do have, um, various projects by the various schools as well as system line. Um, you, it, uh, you can go down the various groups in the year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Those are the ones that are funded. If they have an L, that means they're funded by LoCIP. Otherwise, they're funded by taxation, except for the water and sewer. So the water and sewer is on page one forty-one. So in the sewer, you saw a three hundred and eighty thousand dollar, um, transfer out. That was into, going into the capital fund, which we have, uh, the, uh, replace the utility truck with tail lift. The, uh, plant and system improvements for three hundred and seven thousand. Start putting away some monies for the sewer SCADA, um, which we're trying to complete the water SCADA first, but then try to get started with the sewer SCADA. And then, uh, fifteen thousand for pump replacements, ten thousand for manhole and five thousand for replacement of lab equipment. The items, um, for, uh, the water department. The water department has a utility truck that has hoists and various other, uh, items that I'm sure Bob could do a better job of explaining than I could. But they, that, uh, does, um, needs to be certified. It does need to be, uh, reviewed and that, 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 there we are in need of a replacement of this utility truck. We are putting the twenty thousand additional dollars away for SCADA to try to, there was some additional, um, cybersecurity matters and some other areas that when we did, uh, go through that process of, uh, of, of going through and bidding and quoting, and there was additional funds that would be needed. Um, and so that's as an attempt to try to get that funding in place. And then, uh, the remote read meters, uh, to continually upgrade our, uh, meter reading equipment, uh, without doing. This, uh, this area here does not include a ma, uh, an extreme overhaul, which, um, there's, um, you know, which would require a larger, uh, scale. If you see the estimates of in two thousand, uh, twenty-four and twenty-five would be larger if you were to, uh, change the, the whole system to a more of a wireless, uh, read. So do you, would you like, um, your capital commission members, they do good work. That's where we got some, some bit of our information from them. Did you, uh?
Yeah, I think that would be a good time. Uh, Chris, Chris Donahue is here from the long-range capital commission. He's the chair. Chris, would you like to say anything on, on the capital improvement plan?
Well, I just.
If you, oh, yeah, sorry.
I mean, not much to say. I mean, it's a tough budget year, but I would just say, continue to push. As you saw, there were, there's a lot of needs, capital improvement needs across all the infrastructure in town. And, um, you know, we're making little dents. I think there's a lot of dents that we need to make. So, uh, again, I appreciate you guys doing what you need to do. But, um, I think there's a lot of needs for some of our agent infrastructure that we need across all town departments. So again, just appreciate that and, uh, you know, whatever we can do to help, um, you know, meet with department heads and kind of, uh, you know, prioritize stuff to make it easier for you guys to do your job, we will. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris, and, and thank you to the long-range capital commission for, for all your work on this. And, and it's my hope that you will be able to meet earlier in, next year. And so we'll be able to get a, a head start on, you know, capital for next year as well. But thank you. I know how much work you put into this. We, Tom, do we have anything else to cover? Or we have, um? We do have department heads here tonight as well, if any selectmen have questions. And thank you to, um, to be coming tonight, certainly. Tom?
Do you want any more information on that water utility truck? I didn't do a very good job of explaining that. Or do you get that gist?
I watched one.
Water utility truck. You need more information or you could.
I do have one question, cause I know it's been a discussion we've had for a while now with, uh, cap, with long-range capital. Um, and I'm just, I was looking through the list and I'm trying to understand where it falls. I know we talked about having the proper, uh, smoke and fire detection systems at the town garage. And I don't, I don't see it accounted for anywhere. So I don't know if I'm missing it or what. I mean, is it accounted for in any long range?
Yeah, it's pushed out into the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four under, on page one forty-one.
Is that the camera and fire alarm? Which one is it?
Yeah, yes, fire camera and fire alarms are, are the only we talked about for the, uh, town garage.
Yeah. So I, I mean, I just, and we could certainly talk more about this when we start deliberating. But we sit with an incredible amount of equipment sitting at the town garage. And if there's anything that happens there in off-hours when no one is around, there'd be no way for anyone to even know something was going on, other than if they were driving around. So I know we saw in East Hampton what happened to them because of this type of, I think it was East Hampton.
Yeah.
That had a situation where they had a huge fire and, and, uh, we certainly have a lot of investment in that building. So, uh, I don't know if waiting a couple more years out for that one, that just kind of concerns me. But that's, you know, from my years of us talking on long-range, you know, being part of listening to the long-range capital speak, uh, about things. Um, that one is one that sticks out in my mind.
Yeah, so probably what we would utilize on that, and that's why we haven't necessarily put it in this current budget. We probably utilize the, the funding off of the cell tower lease that we have in place for public safety communications. So that was a public safety matter. So that would probably be the money that would be set, set aside for that. There's been, uh, work that's been done by department heads. Um, there's some items that I have to do to get out to bid on, and in time I will get that out to bid. And, uh, we will, uh, try and move forward on that component. But in the, in the, in this capital setting, we didn't put it in this, uh, in this budget. But we all, uh, know that that's a relatively, uh, uh, matter that needs to get addressed.
Okay, thanks.
That's a good point though, Rob. Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Uh, Tom, I have one, just a question on page one twenty-eight, uh, resource recovery department. Um, and forgive me if you've already covered this or if I missed out on what you explained to ask. But regular payroll goes up, uh, contract rate five thousand, seven hundred dollars. But then I just, why does the medical insurance go up fifteen thousand dollars if no new employees are hired? Like, that's such a big jump right there compared to other departments.
So, uh, right, medical is driven by, uh, you know, by census, right?
Yeah.
So, uh, you may be single, you may be two-person, you may be a family. So there's two people within the group. So I would assume the census probably would have changed.
Okay. I was just, I didn't understand that one, cause the other ones were kind of stayed level and then that one just popped up.
Right. So the, you know, it's hard in the, in the ancillary budgets. It's challenging. So we, in the, in the general fund, we have it under one category. It's a central, sort of, you know, a, a, a central area for fringes. Um, the other areas are more allocated, um, and directed. So any type of change within the, their, you know, their family census, uh, you know, would, uh, would have, would cause a change to the cost.
Gotcha. Thanks.
So I, I believe that's probably what you're saying. As you see, if you can go back to twenty and you can kind of see, there probably was somebody that was in that same pay, you know, see the yearbook, see it go twenty and then it went down. So a possibility that there was, you know, someone married or, you know, two-person or whatever in that year. Then it might have been somebody different. There also was a change in, uh, in twenty, there was a change in, uh, in twenty-one, there was a change. Did that more to the high deductible plan? So then you did see some cost savings as well as well.
And it's tough when it's, uh, such a small pool, those things get, get highlighted.
Uh, I have a couple of questions. It's probably for Bob more than you, with specifics to the public works. Um, do, do we know if all of our streetlights are LED now?
Yeah, I think the majority of them are. Especially those that were allowed to be, and there was some restrictions on things when they did that type of work. So the majority of them are. And like Tom said, you know, going back to review the differences, we did see the, the savings, um, for those years when they first changed them over. So now we're just seeing a slow increase based on the cost change for the distribution supply.
All right. Um, the other one is about the new signal lights they're putting on Main Street. That when they put those in, uh, DOT has taken over responsibility for them?
Yes, thank God.
Uh, what does that leave us with for what we're responsible for?
We will be responsible for one signal light at Gildersley. So, um, which is very old. And we're gonna have to start looking to, uh, we, I tried, um, to convince them to take that particular signal over, but they really had no interest.
Cause it's only for Gildersley.
Right. So, um, that's a very old system as well, although we've made some repairs and it seems to be running, um, efficiently, knock on wood. Um, but, you know, they're very costly to fix, even if you can. What you're doing right now for those boxes is you're borrowing used parts from other boxes that have been changed out. The states, you know, been good trying to help us, but most of their stock has gone now. So we're dealing with our vendors to try to take used parts off the shelf as far as the controllers in the boxes. So we, we've been good. We're, we're gonna need to have to, you know, look at that, uh, sometime soon to, to update that traffic signal box. Probably update the heads as well. We've done some work there, especially the signaling was done years ago. So that seems to be working, but that'll be our only one and that's a pretty critical one there. Um, as well as the other ones that we've experienced a lot of problems with. Hopefully that job will be done sometime this summer. It's been delayed.
Yep.
And we've been making some very expensive repairs to those lights in the area of Millsix Avenue.
What would a rough estimate be for the Gildersley lights to replace?
I mean, the estimates years ago were anywhere between twenty-five and thirty-five thousand, just to do the control. But that, that doesn't include the lights and, um, you know, if we were to change those over to an LED, more modern traffic signal that's hanging across the road, which I think you would, you would definitely benefit from as well. You could be, you could be up much higher.
Uh, and the last one I didn't see in the budget for storm drain cleaning.
So storm drain cleaning is in highway and it's under service contracts. Or it might be actually a separate line item. I might be wrong with that. So we, we.
I think it used to be a separate line item. That's why I don't think I saw it.
We've done, we've done very, very well with that and, um, because of our program changing over to the way we treat our roads in the winter. So we have been, um, been able to save a little money there when, when we need it. And I'm working on plans for, um, I'm working with DP, and we, we work with them, uh, on a weekly basis. Um, we're trying to get some, um, forgiveness on the amount of, um, storm drains that we have to do. And, um, yeah, it's four for storm drain cleaning, four for. It should be on page fifty-nine. So that is a separate line item. So we continue to, what I'm trying to do is alternate between the country and downtown and try to do, um, a little less, about twenty percent less. Because what we're doing, a- as we measure, I, I, I developed an inspection program. Um, that's been out for years, but, uh, it was something that I felt necessary to, um, put together. And every time we're out cleaning the basins, from my first year, I started measuring the depth of product that was in the basin and how much we were moving. Lots of times it was above the pipe. I mean, we were, we were moving feet of product. Uh, this year in particular was our first full year, um, to be able to go around. And basically we have two years of data, um, since we changed our product over. And I think the most that I've seen, and these would be in areas of drainage that comes off in the country. You know, stuff that's coming off of areas around construction sites and stuff like that is about six and a half inches. So it's made a huge difference in our storm water control, uh, what we're supposed to be doing to try to alleviate that and regulate that. So I think it's a great program on both ends. You know, we're, we're trying to save on both sides and I think we're, we're seeing that. Plus we're spending probably two months less time sweeping roads. And that's a lot of fuel and man hours and with equipment as well. So overall, you could see the whole thing kind of mashes together. And, uh, we're hoping to, you know, see some considerable savings in that. Products a little more for what we do, but we, we offset, we offset that pretty, pretty largely on the other end. So I'm pretty happy with those results that we've seen over the past three, four years. Thank you.
I just, one more question for you, Bob.
Sure.
Um, this has been brought up by you, uh, the truck wash that we need, is that?
Yeah.
In the long range down the road, where's that?
That's a bit, a big of a big issue. So we, we solved a really big issue that we hope that's gonna be, um, long-term as our salt shed. Um, we worked really hard for a few years on that and, and we, you know, we, we won the agreement with deep to do the improvements that were so greatly needed and stay where we are because it's a good spot. Um, it saves us a lot of time and money, um, getting to and fro during a storm. So that's good. The next one is on the agenda is that. It's a requirement. Um, it's been for years. Uh, they're working on trying to, uh, you know, get municipalities especially into the state-of-the-art wash bays, um, and that stuff, you know, protects the environment. It's part of that same storm water plan, um, that deep has out to protect the environment. So we continue to look. Um, we've done some work over the past month. Uh, we're continuing to look for a spot that's gonna work. Unfortunately, you know, we, we want to do all our work in one spot because it's more efficient. But our highway garage and most of that area is in the aqua protection area. So it puts great restrictions on what we can do. But there's ways to work within that too as well, you know, for proof of that as a salt shed. You know, we, we just need to work with our agencies who have been very good to us, uh, DPH and DEEP. And we'll continue to do that. But we're gonna need to find a location that we can, we can wash all our vehicles in town in one central location, um, that is part of the EPA standard. Just not a lot of spots in town left.
What would be your estimate to build that?
You, you know, Bob, that, it, if it required a new building, you're talking big numbers.
Yeah.
If you can use an existing space that the town owns and that may have a building, then, then you're looking at really the equipment to add to that facility. You have to make sure it's in, in your water, you know, district, um, so that you have the water supply. Can't be out of a water supply. So there's a lot that goes into it. And then you, you have to be part of your water and sewer. You have to have both. So you've just limited your, your areas to, you know, less than thirty-five percent of your town.
Does the water, the, the wash water go into the sewer or do you have to store it and remove it?
No, you filter. You can filter and store. And then there's a percentage that needs to go into a sewer system so it could be treated properly as well as the same as wastewater. Yeah. So you, you know, that just really limits you based on your system. So.
So is that system handle, does that system handle both like public works and fire equipment? Or is fire got its own?
Everything. PD, fire, any town vehicles. That'll be next around the corner for the big push from mandates.
Any other questions for Bob while he's up here? All right, thank you, Bob.
No, thank you.
Any other questions? Tom, did we, did we? Tom, did we, did we cover everything or do we still have more to cover here?
We've covered.
We've covered everything.
Covered every, every budget area.
So. So with that being said, we, we do have a, another budget workshop that's scheduled for tomorrow evening. Seeing that we, we did cover all the material, if the board would like, we can, we can cancel tomorrow's meeting and, and head straight towards the budget deliberations, which will begin on Tuesday, March twenty-ninth, but it's up to the, up to the board. I think, I think, I think you guys are ready for deliberations at this point, but it's up to-
I think, I think Tom did a great job. I've got a lot of good notes, I think I need a little time to digest it, but I think I'm ready for discussion.
So is there consensus on that?
Yes.
Okay, so then our next meeting will be deliberations, which will be on Tuesday at seven PM. And just for the record, let me get the schedule, followed by more deliberations on Wednesday, March thirtieth. And we may need to schedule additional deliberations depending, but we, the board of selectmen will be adopting the board of selectmen's revised budget on Wednesday, April sixth. So by Wednesday, April sixth. So as John mentioned, I just want to thank you, Tom. I know how much work you put into this budget as well as, and time, and, and you did a great job explaining everything, I think, to the selectmen. So I just want to thank you for your hard work on this.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
And make the motion adjourn.
Now second.
Thank you, Sean and John, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, have a good night, everyone, thank you.